Good evening. Welcome to the New Ulm League of Women Voters Candidate Forum featuring the candidates for New Ulm Mayor. My name is Kathleen Berg. I am a member of the New Ulm League of Women Voters and I am moderating the New Ulm Mayor Candidate Forum, designed to educate voters in preparation for the general election that will be held on November 8th, 2022. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. We encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government and we influence the public policy through education and advocacy. Our event this evening is designed to educate the voters about the relevant views of these candidates. Our candidates this evening presented from the audience members and the League of Women Voters pursuant to a nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format established by the League of Women Voters of Minnesota. Our purpose is to facilitate an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss the issues of importance to the public in this particular election. We are grateful for our media partners, the New Ulm Journal, which is covering the event this evening. In addition, we are broadcasting live on New Ulm Community Access Television and YouTube. The event will be available on demand on the City of New Ulm YouTube channel accessible at the City of New Ulm website. New Cat will also rebroadcast the event periodically until the election. KNUJ is unable to broadcast live tonight because of a Twins game, but they are recording and will replay the event tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. We have several questions that were submitted by members of the public via email, L W V N E W U L M at L W V M N dot org. We will continue to accept questions during the forum from the audience members here at New Ulm City Hall by email and by phone. Our phone numbers are, our phone number is 507-276-4711. Ushers have notepads or cards, I should say, available to audience members. Please write your questions on a note card and pass it to one of the ushers. I will repeat the email and phone address in a bit. Those are also posted on the screen for those of you viewing on television or YouTube. We have given each candidate two questions in advance, which were drafted by the League of Women Voters of New Ulm. All other questions will be coming from the public. We do screen all questions that are submitted. We may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplications. Questions will not be asked if they are of a personal nature and not relevant to the office, or if they are designed only to make a statement rather than solicit information. Our intention in screening questions is to select questions that represent the interests of the persons that should, that submit those questions. We usually receive more questions than we have time to use. If you have submitted a question that is not asked, or if you want more information about a topic that is covered tonight, please contact the candidates directly after the forum. I will now give you our candidates the ground rules for this evening's candidates meeting for mayor, and they are as follows. I will ask the candidates to spend one minute, 30 seconds introducing themselves. The order of introduction has been established. An official timekeeper will mark the time. The timekeeper will hold up a 15-second sign when you have 15 seconds remaining. When the stop sign is shown, you must finish your sentence. The candidates are expected to honor the time limits. Upon completion of the introduction, each candidate will respond to the two questions that were drafted by the League and provided to the candidates in advance of this evening's forum. Therefore, or thereafter, I should say, the forum will be opened to the questions from the audience and phoned questions. Candidates have one minute to respond to the questions. The answers will be alternated. At the end of the forum, the candidates will have one minute for closing remarks. They will be in the reverse of the opening statements. We will bring the entire meeting to a close at 5:55 PM. We have two candidates here this evening, and according to the draw, our first candidate that will be speaking with his opening remarks is Ron Wendinger.
Thank you. I am Ron Wendinger, and I've no stranger to New Ulm. I lived, farmed for 35 years in Nikla County, and I've always had a New Ulm address, and so New Ulm is not strange to me. I was well acquainted with the town. In 2001, Connie and I moved to New Ulm, where we have lived for 21 years. I'm running for mayor to be your voice on the city council, your representative, and your ambassador to neighboring towns which share much of the same history and some of the many problems that we have here in New Ulm. But I'm also running because I want to help maintain New Ulm's past. I'm proud of those who came and settled here, whether they were German, Irish, or some other ethnic heritage. And having been a Concord singer for 40 years, I have been one of New Ulm's ambassadors of goodwill to the hundreds of towns we've visited across the state and country. I've also traveled to Europe five times, mainly to Germany. For many years, I was emcee, and I did programs in German to our, when we were on tour in Germany, as well as to the many crowds under large tents here, over there, or in nursing homes. I'm proud of the German town, town on the prairie, and as your mayor, I will continue to present, be present, and be proud of New Ulm's past and also help manage its future.
Kathleen Backer, your opening statement.
Hi. I am Kathleen Backer, and I chose to run for mayor of New Ulm because I believe that I have the skills and experience and the passion to carry out the duties and responsibilities of the mayor as laid out in the city charter. My priorities will be to find solutions to the labor shortage, housing, daycare, revitalization of downtown of New Ulm, economic development, including business retention or retention of those who are already invested in our community. Would look for solutions to public safety, including mental illness, blight, and the restoration of the Herman Monument. I was born and raised in New Ulm and chose to come back here after leaving for nine years, chose to come back to New Ulm back in 1998 after being gone for nine years and make it my forever home, just like on TV. I've been afforded a lot of opportunities during my professional and personal life and believe that those skills will be relevant if I'm elected to be mayor. If I'm elected, I will work with the city staff, with the boards and the commissions to advance the present, the New Ulm Comprehensive Plan that is presently being worked on and to work to implement that. I am proud of my heritage in New Ulm, and as many of you may know, I am the executive director with the Brown County Historical Society. Thank you.
Okay, we will now have the first advanced question that was sent to the two candidates. Kathleen Backer, you will be going first. Give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinion. Again, that's one minute for these answers.
Over time, I have worked with different committees, boards, and organizations, and usually those committees and boards do not have individuals serving on them that have the same opinion. And so, and I believe that having diversity in the boardroom or committees helps flesh out opportunities and expand understanding. And so, if you have a difference of opinion with me, if I chair that committee, I would encourage you to state your opinion and have discussion. Again, I believe that when you have diversity like that in a room making decisions, you come to a better understanding, and then your responsibility, once it's voted on, is to be committed to the decision of the group. And so, I have had experience, a lot of different committees and organizations. It's not easy to be in that situation, but it does end up in being rewarding and move organizations forward.
Ron Wendinger, give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions.
I've been president of various organizations and served on several committees in the past several years. Feel the best way to have, work with people that have different opinions on an issue is to sit down and have a meeting and air your differences and what kind of a compromise can be reached. This past few years with the COVID, we had, we all went through some tough times, and the American Legion was no exception. We were wondering, how can we keep this going, you know? And we got together, I met with some resistance in the beginning to serve curbside meals. Well, after some arguing and sitting down, we decided to do it, and it was so successful and with a lot of work, hard work by volunteers, and I thank the New Ulm community for supporting us in this endeavor.
Thank you, Ron. Ron, on to the next question that was sent to you in advance. How would you balance the short and long-term goals of the community?
First, we need to define long-term and short-term goals. The restoration of Herman is a long-term goal, much needed, but still in the future. Our short-term goals might be our infrastructure. We are a town that wants to attract more workers and businesses. Well, we need to, because people want to get out of the big cities, away from crime, the heavy traffic and the rat race, they want to move to a smaller town and work remotely, maybe work remotely. If they want to work here, we need to have places for them to live. Another short-term goal is daycare. If there would be a home or facility not being used, maybe there could be a partial property tax abatement for a few years. Another short-term goal might be finding a program for those who wish to work in healthcare, like offering a program to educate and train nursing assistants. Defining goals is a matter of placing things in priority and being flexible as unexpected things arise.
Kathleen, I will repeat the question for you. How would you balance the short and long-term goals of the community?
Balancing is always a challenge, and first of all, short-term goals are, as they are clarified, short-term, and so they generally will fall onto some type of a calendar. Your long-term goals will usually have strategies and within that, action items. And those action items then get put onto a calendar and usually will be implemented over a longer period of time, whether it's two, three, four, five, 10 years. I understand our comprehensive plan is going to be a 10- to 20-year plan. So then balancing it would, would be in the organizing and scheduling. You would have your short-term goals, and you would interface your action items from your long-term project with those and make sure that they aren't conflicting and so that they can be achievable, and then it's a matter of revisiting and annually adding those action items to the short-term goals every year going forward.
Okay. We will now accept questions from the audience and also the television audience. And with that, we will go on to the impromptu questions that will be asked at this particular time. First one will be for Kathleen Backer. The mayor of New Ulm is the official person to meet, greet, and welcome all dignitaries and visitors to the city of New Ulm. What special skills, knowledge, personal travel, and cross-cultural experience have you had that will enable you to serve New Ulm as official greeter and lead ambassador of goodwill as representative of the citizens of New Ulm? It's a long question.
I better not have you repeat it.
I can.
I, first of all, in, in many of my roles, I have served as an executive director, and you are then the, the face of the organization and you do the welcoming, the meeting and greeting. As far as cultural, I had the opportunity when I was with Brown County Historical Society in the 80s to travel to Ulm, Germany, and be the guest of the city of New Ulm with Hans Jost being the tour guide for the entire week. Years later, my son was a Rotary Exchange student and lived in Germany for a year. I had the opportunity to travel and to meet with him and travel that country over. I also have traveled to Norway and other countries. I've also traveled the United States over and over. So I feel I'm well-prepared to visit and welcome people to this wonderful city of New Ulm.
Ron Wendinger. I will, don't expect you to, I'll repeat the question. Just, it's much easier, I think. The mayor of New Ulm is the official person to meet, greet, and welcome all dignitaries and visitors to the city of New Ulm. What special skills, knowledge, personal travel, and cross-cultural experiences have you had that will enable you to serve New Ulm as official greeter and lead ambassador of goodwill as representative of the citizens of New Ulm?
I think I was fortunate enough to be able to travel to Europe five times, being with the Concord Singers and for many ti, many years being the emcee, but what I'm really fortunate is my ability to speak and understand German language. My wife and I hosted for, during Heritage Fest, and German entertainers, and it was so helpful to know, be able to communicate with them and not always be fighting, trying to figure out what the other one means or says. And that's where I really enjoyed myself in Germany, because we gave performances in German, we gave, I, I gave the programs in German, and I think it all went very, very well. I made friends that we still have to this very day, and my, my German speaking, I think would help. Thank you.
Just a reminder at this point that if you have a question and you'd like to call it in, please call 507-276-4711, or if you want to email, it'd be L W V N E W U L M at L W V M N dot org. Also, if anyone has a question in the audience, pass a note to one of the League of Women Voters ushers. Thank you. The next question. Ron, you will start with this one. Ron Wendinger. What motivated you to offer your time and talents to serve as mayor of New Ulm?
I think it's because I've always liked New Ulm. You know, I used to, or my wife and I used to travel down south for the winters, and while, yeah, the winter was great, we made a lot of nice friends, and after those three months, this was still home. I like living in New Ulm. It's been good to me for the last 21 years, and Connie and I have both liked it. We have a beautiful home, beautiful location, and we just enjoy being here, and so we thought, I thought I would give back a little bit something to the community, some of my expertise in giving touring and so on and so forth, and greeting people, and being out there to greet people.
Kathleen Backer. What motivated you to offer your time and talents to serve as mayor of New Ulm?
My motivation is I believe it would be an honor and a privilege to serve as mayor of this fine community. I'm proud to be a citizen of New Ulm. I chose to come back and make New Ulm my home. My experiences have been overwhelmingly great when you serve as a tour guide of the city of New Ulm, the feedback you get, working with the Kiesling House, working as a tour guide at Shell's, and also working with the Historical Society, interacting with visitors that come into the community. They are so complimentary about the cleanliness of the community, the rich history, the well-maintained historic buildings. We have great park system. Again, it would just be an honor and a privilege to serve as mayor of this great community.
Next question, we'll have Kathleen start. Kathleen Backer. What is the one thing you see as the, the New Ulm's best asset? You just mentioned some of them, so you have to choose which one you think is New Ulm's best asset.
Its pride in its community.
You have a whole minute to talk.
And I usually do. You, it's, the pride in this community is reflected in the way in which we take care of what is ours, whether it's our streets, whether it's our parks, whether it's our infrastructure overall, and the programs and services that we provide. So again, it's the pride that drives all of us, and that's what makes me want to be the mayor.
Ron Wendinger. What is the one thing you see as New Ulm's best asset?
The best asset, I think, in New Ulm are right here, the people. These are wonderful people here in town. I can't get over how, you know, you can be crossing a street and the car coming by and, you know, honk the horn at you or wave, you know? You can't do that in some, in the, on our big cities. That's what, what makes this part so special. And being able to, every morning I go for coffee and sit down with friends and solve all the world's problems and talk real smart, that's, that's what's, what's fun about this. And I think we have that certain camaraderie here amongst us, where we can, we'll be there if someone has a problem, that they're, they'll be there to help you if they can. And I think that's our number one asset, is the people. Thank you.
Ron Wendinger. On to the next question. What would you do to entice and retain businesses in New Ulm?
Well, for one thing, we have to get the ball rolling as far as housing is concerned, because a friend of mine who told me, he says, it's no use trying to get business here in town unless you get, get someplace for them to live. Well, I personally know of someone living in a neighboring town that would like to come here, but the housing is just not available, and she is a daycare worker, or not a daycare, a healthcare worker, and, but because of the unavailability of the type of home they can afford and they need, they're deciding to stay where they are. And that, I think, is one of the main things, and daycare is definitely another one. So maybe we can offer some kind of program to try and entice new people to begin their daycare.
Kathleen Backer. What would you do to entice and retain businesses in New Ulm?
Well, I believe that there's obviously a labor shortage, and so there's a kind of that, it, it just keeps going, snowballing, if you will. If you don't have housing, you don't have labor. If you don't have daycare, you may not have labor. And so there are issues on the table that we need to address. The incentives would include looking at financial incentives. I know the Economic Authority has provided some grants to, for startup, for businesses, and they've expanded that opportunity to potential businesses. I believe we need to visit with existing businesses to find out what their issues are and work through solu, solutions with them. So there are several things. There's the housing, there's daycare, obviously the labor shortage is driven probably by housing. We know we have jobs available.
Okay, the next question, Kathleen. Given a 10-year timeframe, what is your vision for downtown New Ulm?
A 10-year timeframe?
For downtown New Ulm.
I've been talking about this and talking about it. So if, if I had money and investors and workers, I would like to see New Ulm, first of all, the main street downtown New Ulm as a mall, if you will, that there's no parking, because we do have other parking, we'd look for alternative parking, that the upper levels of all of these buildings in downtown New Ulm would become residences, apartments, and so we would have energy in, in the downtown area. And we've already seen reinvestment in our downtown with Inspired, with the reuse of the Herberger's Building. Kaiserhoff has re-energized itself, and so I just have this vision of people walking and talking and 24/7 downtown New Ulm.
Ron Wendinger. Given a 10-year timeframe, what is your vision for downtown New Ulm?
Well, I too would like to see some small businesses start in New Ulm. I can remember the times when we had, I believe there were three or four hardware stores just on Main Street. We had so many other things, you know, restaurants, we are, we don't have that, all that many restaurants downtown anymore. And I like to see our storefronts brought up to date and, and come into the German style if, if possible. I know some of this gets to be burdensome as far as cost is concerned, but I think with the help from the city, this could be, this would be a viable thing to do. I just like to see also the, the people downtown like Kathleen said, and, but we have to remember, this is Minnesota. January is not a good time to be sitting on a park bench.
Just another reminder that if you do have a question and you want to phone it in, the number is 507-276-4711. If you have an email that you'd like to send in with a question, the address is L W V N E W U L M at L W V M N dot org. You may also, if you have questions, write them down for the audience here and pass it to one of our ushers. Next question. Ron, how much time do, Ron Wendinger, I should say, how much time do you intend to invest in mayoral obligations? in mayoral obligations?
Well, as much time as it is required that I, to get the job done. I have talked into Mayor, talked to Mayor Sweeney, and he's told me about how much time he spends in his office, or in time spending on the phone, or emails, or greeting people, maybe going to some meetings, to some commission meetings. I know that, that gets to be important, especially some of the meetings, some of the commissions. But I would be willing to spend, I'd say, between 10 to 15 hours per week as doing mayoral duties. And sometimes it would probably be less, sometimes maybe more. But whatever it takes to do the job, I'd be there.
How much time do you intend to invest in mayoral obligations?
Well, in, in preparation for running for mayor, the one thing I did do is to visit with Mayor Sweeney as well. And he provided me with three documents. And I believe, Ron, you may have the same documents. What are the roles and responsibilities and experiences that he had? And then some interesting facts about New Ulm. And then finally, he had a very detailed schedule of activities that he had participated in. It comes out to an average of about 50 hours per month, varying, like Ron said, where some weeks you might do 10 or 15 hours, another week when you have Bavarian Blast and you have the Herman event coming up in September, you might very well spend more time. But I'm available to invest and spend the time that it's going to take to do the job well.
Kathleen, you're next for the, as first for the next question. What new, unique approach would you take to promote New Ulm?
New and unique. I visited Pennsylvania, Philadelphia, years and years ago, and I ran into Benjamin Franklin. And he took me along to follow him as he did his speech on the steps of a significant building. I would envision the gnomes dressed in Christmas holiday outfits during the holidays, working the downtown area. I would see those same gnomes and/or people dressed in costume, which we talked about doing with the Kiesling House, walking the streets, encouraging people to follow them and have a tour of New Ulm, and find out more information about this wonderful city. So I would love to see something like that take place. And we'll look for that and some funding in the future.
Ron Wenninger. What new approach would you take to promote New Ulm?
Well, it's a hard question, but I would try to sell New Ulm for what, what it is. Bring out the, the strong points that we have. We have business and industry here. And there's so many opportunities for you here. And if you want to start, maybe start up a business, there's, New Ulm is here to, to help you. I think that, that is the main thing. And that's just come to light here now in the last few months with these grants that they've been giving to people to want to start their business. And I applaud that. And that's very, very, very forward-looking. And to keep our people, you know, informed as to what is going on and what opportunities are out there for them.
Next question would be for Ron Wenninger to start. What is your plan for recruiting individuals to serve on New Ulm's many commissions?
On, on what?
I will repeat the question.
Yes.
What is your plan for recruiting individuals to serve on New Ulm's many commissions?
Well, the thing I would do is to try and get, first of all, equality, so that things level out, and that we don't just have one commission top-heavy with one, and then the other one's not representative. I would also like to try and match the person with the commission. It's no, doesn't make sense to appoint someone to a commission that he knows nothing about or has little interest in. Keep, keep the person that, and if the person is willing to serve, let it, let it be known to me. And if, if there is some, someone out there and there's an opening on a commission, I would want them to come to me and say they are interested in.
Okay, Kathleen. What is your plan for recruiting individuals to serve on New Ulm's many commissions?
My plan would include meeting with the president, the sitting mayor. He's gone through this process and understands it well. I would reach out to the city council president, and then to the city councillors, all to come forth with recommendations and suggestions for the various and many committees, commissions that New Ulm has. I personally would appreciate and, and work to have youth represented on our commissions as part of their civic education. Can we get juniors and seniors to be able to sit on a commission to learn about the work, how does the city work? What is the role of the particular commission? And that I would work with the schools, the councillors, to see if we can get juniors and seniors involved, and also look for diversity on these commissions.
The next question, we'll, we'll start with Kathleen this time, Kathleen Backer. Are there any regional, state, or national organizations that you, you plan to participate in as Mayor of New Ulm? And how would your participation benefit New Ulm?
Well, I'm aware, and again, meeting with, with Terry and some of the city council members, that they already do meet with and belong to different organizations at the state level. I'm not familiar, as I sit here, with the different names. So I would make myself available and participate in those conferences and workshops that already are being utilized by our community. I also would look for area roundtables where other mayors and/or city government are meeting, and invite myself, if you will. I'm assuming they would also reach out to me if I were the new mayor, and invite me to be a part of those councils. And get myself as well-educated and up to date on what's going on as far as serving your community in the capacity of the mayor.
Ron Wenninger. Are there any regional, state, or national organizations you plan to participate in as Mayor of New Ulm? And how would you, your participation benefit New Ulm?
Well, if I, my thoughts go back to former Mayor Bob Boisman, who spent countless hours with mayors of other cities, at the state level, you know, and trying to get the Highway 14 project completed. I know that project is now in the making and not needed anymore, but he put countless hours in on it. And if a situation like that comes about again, I would be willing to travel to St. Paul, or to another town, and to discuss things, or where we can go ahead with a prod, with projects, or promote projects for the good of not only New Ulm, but for Southern Minnesota. And we need that cooperation amongst each other, not just New Ulm, but to get out and about, and to make our wishes known to them.
Ron Wenninger. What do you understand are the key functions assigned to the office of mayor in New Ulm?
The mayor of New Ulm is really a sounding board or ambassador. When talking to Mayor Sweeney, he says, yes, many times, or there, I shouldn't say many times, but there are times when voters come to them, citizens, and I try, he said, I try to steer them to the right person in the city, whether it be a city councillor, or a city manager, or, or whatever. And to just be there as a sounding board. I, the mayor of New Ulm does not have a vote. Another, he is, like we said earlier, an ambassador. Bounce things off of me, and I will get it to the right person. And I, I think it's, have a good rapport with the members of the city council is important in order to get things done what they want.
Kathleen Backer. What do you understand are the key functions assigned to the office of mayor in New Ulm?
I understand that the chief responsibility is to be the chief executive officer or the official, and that your responsibilities are to formally represent the city in a ceremonial responsibility. Also, that you would be the one that would be processing resolutions, and we see many of those taking place and presenting those. You'd do the ribbon cutting, again, representing and, and spreading goodwill as the mayor of the community. You also have opportunity to influence the community with your appointments to commissions, and that is your responsibility to do so with approval by the city council. And that you could also encourage and bring up issues for consideration by the city council, again, not having a vote, but you can voice your opinion. And I think that that is a significant role as well.
Kathleen, you're up first for the next question. Have you done any research on the, in quotation marks, "strong towns" presentation given to our community?
I have not, to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Ron Wenninger.
Yes.
I'll repeat that for you. I know it's been in the newspaper, et cetera. Have you done any research on the, in quotation marks, "strong towns" presentation given to our community?
No, that, I have to be like Kathleen, that's news to me. No, I don't.
Okay. Well, accept that. No problem. Ron Wenninger, you're up for the next question. How do you differ from your opponent in your ability to serve as New Ulm's mayor?
Well, I have thought about that. I don't know. I think with the experience that I've had, traveling abroad with and meeting with our German friends, German, Austrian, gave me a unique perspective of how they live and how we live. I, it was that exchange, and it was the most enjoyable part. I am always, I always treasure those days. And I just, I really miss the days of the Heritage Fest when we had that exchange. And we had the good entertainment, but we have to move on now. But I would, I would just think that I could be able to communicate with visitors that we have here. And that's basically the job of the mayor. And I think I would have a good understanding of the city council members. I know many of them, some of them personally, not well, some of them not so well. But I think I could get along good with them and have a, bounce some ideas off of them, and, and ask the right questions.
Kathleen Backer. How do you differ from your opponent in your ability to serve as New Ulm's mayor?
I haven't looked at all of Ron's credentials, so I don't know all of that. I do know that I have served as an elected official for District 88. And the accountability factor is rather interesting. It's a great opportunity, but it also can be challenging. And so you come under a different kind of scrutiny when you are elected, and people want your ear. So I do have that experience. I also have had experience serving with city, and with county, and at the state level. I have served on legislative oversight committees for the Minnesota State Historical Society. I was on the hiring committee at the state level for society, and have worked with county, and have served on city commissions, organizations, and like the Renew Committee, and also the Herman Monument Interpretative Center Committee.
That is our last question for the evening. We will now go into and give the candidates an opportunity to have one minute in closing remarks. We will proceed in reverse order from the opening remarks. So we will start at this point with Ron Wenninger.
I thank the League of Women Voters for hosting and inviting me this evening to this discussion. I also thank my opponent for sharing her thoughts and ideas with me and the New Ulm voters. Thank all of you for listening. My door will always be open as your mayor, to listen to your ideas and concerns. I'm an honest and caring person, and I speak from the heart. I will never pretend to be something I am not. We have a small sign that hangs in our kitchen. It says, "Wir werden zu schnell alt und zu spät gescheit," which means we get too soon old and too late smart. We live in a small community. We know each other, and we can discuss things civilly, even if we disagree. I know many people in New Ulm. I want to be an ambassador for you, whether it be in a neighboring town, or visitors from abroad. I like being able to talk to our friends in Ulm and New Ulm, and to keep up the good relationship we have with our sister cities. Dankeschön.
Kathleen Backer.
I too would like to extend my appreciation to the League of Women Voters, to have this opportunity for this forum, to field the questions, and to further understand one another, as well as solutions to issues out there. If I were elected to serve as your mayor, first of all, it would be, I would take that opportunity with great pride. I would be available to carry out my duties and responsibilities. I would dedicate my time and expertise to work with the city staff, with the boards, and commissions, and the citizens, to move our agendas forward and find solutions to the issues that we're facing, not unlike many other communities. And I would welcome the opportunity to participate in planning and implementing the New Ulm Comprehensive Plan, which I understand is under works in the planning stages, to be completed by the end of 2023, and then start implementation, which would be during the tenure of this mayor election. So, thank you.
Let's thank the candidates for their participation this evening. The League of Women Voters wishes to thank everyone who helped with this educational event, including the candidates, the League of Women Voters volunteers, NewCAT, KNUJ, and The Journal. This forum was designed to educate you for your vote in the general election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Absentee voting opens September 23rd, and is available until November 7th. For complete information on elections, voting, including registration, go to vote411.org. That's V-O-T-E-4-1-1.org. Please vote on November 8th. It matters. Good evening. Good evening.
I doubt either one of us would do a great job.
Well, this isn't at least a Trump and a Biden thing.
It's pretty easy, you know?
Oh, my.
Since it says six o'clock. Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum featuring the candidates for New Ulm City Council Ward Four. My name is Diane Norland. I am a member of the St. Peter area League of Women Voters, and I am moderating the New Ulm City Council Forum designed to educate voters in preparation for the general election. I also sit on North Mankato City Council. So. The general election will be held on November eighth, 2022. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan volunteer group. We encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government, and we influence public policy through education and advocacy. Our event tonight is designed to educate the voters about the relevant views of these Our candidates tonight will answer questions presented from audience members and the LWV pursuant to a nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format established by the LWV of Minnesota. Our purpose is to facilitate an opportunity to hear the candidates discuss the issues of importance to the public in this election. We are grateful to our media partners. The New Ulm Journal is covering the event. We are also broadcasting live tonight on New Ulm Community Access Television and YouTube. So we are stars. The event will be available on demand on the City of New Ulm YouTube channel, accessible at the City of New Ulm website. And I did go to look, and yes, it is there. New Cat will rebroadcast the event periodically until the election. KNUJ is unable to broadcast tonight, Twins game, but are recording and will replay the event between now and November eighth. We have several questions that were submitted by members of the public via email to lrvnewulm at lvwmn.org. We will continue to accept questions during the forum from audience members here at the New Ulm City Hall by email and by phone. Our phone number is five zero seven three seven six four seven one one. Ushers have note cards available to audience members. Please write your question on a note card and pass it to one of the ushers. Where are my ushers? They're around there somewhere.
Diane, the number would be two seven six. I think you said three.
Did I? Sorry. Two seven, okay. Let me repeat from the beginning. Five zero seven two seven six four seven one one. Please write your question on a note card and pass it to one of the ushers. I will repeat the email and phone numbers in a while. Those are posted on the screen for those of you viewing on television or YouTube. We have given each candidate two questions in advance, which were drafted by LWV New Ulm. All other questions will come from the public. We do screen all questions submitted. We may rephrase, combine, or eliminate questions to avoid duplication. Questions will not be asked if they are of a personal nature and not relevant to the office, or if they are designed only to make a statement rather than solicit information. Our intention in screening questions is to select questions that represent the interests of the persons that submit questions. We usually receive more questions than we have time to submit. If you have submitted a question that is not asked, or if you want more information about a topic that is covered tonight, please contact the candidates directly after the forum. So let us begin the City Council Candidate Forum. The procedure we will follow begins with asking each candidate to introduce themselves with a short statement. They will each have one and a half minutes, and we do have timers in the front. Upon completion of the introductions, each candidate will be given one minute to respond to questions which I will read. The order of the responses will be random or alternated, and I will give the order for each question as we go along. Candidates will also have one minute for closing remarks at the end of our forum. An official timekeeper will mark the time and will signal the candidates as their time expires. We look forward to a respectful learning experience. The candidates are expected to honor time limits. So let us begin with the opening statements. And we will begin with Larry.
All right. Hello, I'm Larry Mack. I'm New Ulms Ward Four Councillor. I'm running for reelection. I've served on the New Ulm City Council for the past eight years. I'm a current Vice Chair of the Planning Commission and a member of the Blake Committee. I'm a sixth-generation New Ulm native and have worked as a tool and die maker at 3M New Ulm for the past 23 years. I have a long history of community involvement from the New Ulm J.C.s and Turner Hall to the Lindt House, the HBC Commission, and many years of volunteering at events such as Bach Fest and Oktoberfest. I'm currently involved with the Sister Cities Commission, Brown County Historical Society Board, Junior Pioneers Park Committee Project, and the Grand Center for Arts on their building committee. During my eight years on the council, I've been hands-on in a lot of decision-making. Some of those decisions resulted in support for local businesses, updating zoning ordinances, completed-renewed projects, progress on daycare issues, potential workforce housing options, approved tax abatements for new and expanding businesses. The council has now started working on updating the comprehensive plan, which is to set the city's course for the next 20 years. It's due to be completed in late 2023. I'd like to see this through. Since 2014, I've dedicated myself to serving the residents of New Ulm, especially Ward Four. I've actively listened, responded, and worked to find solutions that benefit the community far into the future. If reelected, I will continue to make sure you're heard and support decisions that put New Ulm first.
Thank you, Larry. Michelle.
Thank you, first of all, to the League of Women Voters for hosting this and giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts about what is good for New Ulm. I am Michelle Markraph, and I am running for Ward Four City Council this fall. I first came to New Ulm in 1986 and lived here as a college student up at DMLC. Since graduation from that school, I returned oftentimes to New Ulm for visiting family. And every time I came to New Ulm, I always wondered what I could do to help this great little city on two rivers, and kept thinking about what can I do to help New Ulm. And at the time, the only thing I could do was spend money here. So my husband really loved us coming to New Ulm, went to the Christmas shop, and Hurburgers were two big stops that I always made. But now that I'm here and living here, I have the ability to effect change in this city. When I came a couple of years ago, I started Hundred Women Who Care, which is a group of women, 100 women, who meet twice a year. Each time we meet, we vote on a place, a nonprofit that will receive money. Everybody gives $100. So on one evening, we've got 100 women, $100, $10,000 for that nonprofit. As this newer person but with a long history here, I will bring a fresh perspective to this position and ideas that are informed by my long history in New Ulm and yet open to new possibilities.
Thank you, Michelle. We will begin with two questions drafted by LWV New Ulm, which were provided to the candidates last week. And we will start with you, Michelle. Number one, give examples of how you have been able to work productively with those who do not share your opinions.
As an executive director, I have worked with boards who are full of directors that have many diverse opinions. I'm pretty sure that my husband will tell you about countless times that I came home frustrated from a board meeting because somebody just didn't get what I wanted to do. But I learned important lessons through that. It taught me to work with others who have diverse opinions, and oftentimes those opinions are better than what I think mine own are. My husband taught me something, too. He said, "To have the belief that people come to the table with good intentions." And I never thought about that before, and I thank him that I now approach different opinions as somebody's coming with good intentions. And so I start with that mindset. As a former executive director, I worked with a board member who I asked to come on the board because we didn't agree. And my husband was pretty surprised that I asked. You said, "You asked Molly?" And he said, "Yes, I did." She had an accounting degree, and she was somebody I knew would hold me accountable, and she was helpful to me as I worked on that board.
Thank you. Shall I repeat the question, Larry?
I got it.
Okay.
In my 23 years at 3M, there have been many times I've had to work on a project with others who thought differently from me. For example, a coworker and I disagree how to take a mold apart that we needed to fix ASAP. There were no blueprints to follow. My coworker felt strongly one way, I felt strongly another. We both had valid reasons for our views. We wound up bringing in a third party to look at the mold. After listening to his take, my coworker modified his idea a bit, I modified mine. The compromise we drew up on the whiteboard got the job done. Whenever you're working as part of a team, such as a city council, staying open-minded, being respectful is the key. You ask questions and do your homework, keep your motions in check, you work towards a solution that's best for the community at large.
Thank you, Larry. Question number two, and we will start with you, Larry. What is your top priority for council? And what do you plan to do as city councillor to meet this priority?
My top priority would be to continue to supporting businesses of all kinds, helping them find ways to grow within the New Ulm community. This means offering tax abatements and loans to attract new businesses or encourage expansion efforts, which we recently saw with Southern Minnesota Tool, an existing business, and Black Frost Distillery as a new business. Supporting businesses means approving special requests to help increase customer volume, such as temporary alley closure or adding seasonal parklets for the downtown. It means continuing to network with a variety of people, both in-town and out-of-town, and exploring fresh ideas. Closely tied to supporting businesses will be to explore more options for expanded workforce housing. We need to make sure middle-income workers in New Ulm have places to live and raise their families.
Thank you. The question for you, Michelle. What is your top priority for council, and what do you plan to do as city councillor to meet this priority?
My priority for New Ulm will be workforce expansion. Right now is an important time for New Ulm to have the right people in place on the city council, as both the comp plan and strategic planning will take place in the next four years. The comp plan tells us what the city wants to do, and the strategic plan tells us how we will get it done. And once that plan is complete, it will be the basis for all future spending decisions that the council makes. As we increase the workforce, I will look increasing the population, and that means we need more housing here in New Ulm. Since 2015, we've had an average of 21 new homes being built in New Ulm every year, which isn't that many for expanding. Right now, in the 2017 housing study, we had a less than 1% vacancy rate, and I heard that it was just updated, and we still have less than 1% vacancy for rentals. We need to change that. We need to address daycare, and also, mental health is an important issue that will help keep our workforce thriving and strong.
Thank you. Your first question from the audience, and we will start with you, Michelle. What are your thoughts about the New Ulm park system in regard to its impact on the city budget?
The New Ulm park system is an amazing system, first of all. We are a gem in all of Minnesota. I think a lot of cities look to New Ulm and are very, I would say, some other citizens wish that they could live here just for the park system. We do need to take a look, however, at the park system and what it does with the New Ulm budget. In the 2022, the last year's budget, park system was almost $4 million. It was $3.8 million. And of that, we often talk about the expenses associated with it. We don't talk about the revenue. Only 27% of the expenses were covered by the park system. And so it's going to be a tough decision to talk about, but we need to talk about, is it time to raise the fees and increase the revenue that we get out of the park system in order to continue this great place that we have, in order to keep our lifeguards and pools open so that we have a great place to live here in New Ulm?
Thank you, Michelle. Larry, what are your thoughts about the New Ulm park system in regard to its impact on the city budget?
We have a fabulous park system, and we have to maintain it. And it's hard to expand without doing increases, but yet we have to be mindful of the people that are using the system. And it's got to be affordable for all users, whether it's to little kids to seniors that want to go swim, you know, in capacities. So I've dealt with it on the council, and we've done gradual increases every year. And we look at the budget, and we look what's being used, and we try to accommodate for everybody within the community. And we've established the system, and we have to maintain our facilities to the highest that we can.
Thank you, Larry. Starting with you, Larry, the next question. How does the Zoning and Planning Commission serve in helping the entire city council in governing the city affairs?
I think the Planning Commission, you know, represents, we have a zoning manual. We follow that to help guide us with our planning decisions to make sure that we're consistent. It's a blueprint, and we need to use it day-to-day, you know, for a variance or a setback. And we have to be consistent at the end result in how we use it. And we have to also look at our infill within our community and where we're going to put an R2 housing versus an R3 or R4 housing within our city. You don't just put R4 next to an R1 housing. And yeah, just like industrial, you know, things of those capacities. But Planning Commission advises the city council, does the homework, brings the recommendations to the council for them to act on.
Thank you, Larry. Michelle, how does the Zoning and Planning Commission serve in helping the entire city council in governing the city affairs?
The Zoning Commission is really the first stop where people go if they need a variance or if they need to make some adjustment to what they want to do. It's the first stop that the Hope Foundation went to because they want to build those apartments and the twin homes. And that's the place that really looks at the current zoning regulations, looks at what they're proposing, and makes sure that it's good for New Ulm. Things have to go through the Planning Commission before they can get to the city council. And that's really the place where people who understand what we want in New Ulm through the comp plan and through our zoning ordinances, they can take those, apply it to what people are asking, and then make informed decisions and pass those decisions on to the council to make decisions at the council level.
Thank you, Michelle. The next question, and we'll start with you, Michelle. Do you support official steps to make New Ulm a pollinator-friendly community? If so, what initiatives would you support?
Pollinator-friendly communities are something that are talked about more so now than in the past, and definitely is something to look at further. I know from listening to city council meetings and attending meetings that most council members have not heard from many in the community that it is something they want. That doesn't mean it's not something that can happen, but I think we need more community input as to what people would like with pollinator-friendly, having a pollinator-friendly community. I have seen a lot of places where it looks really nice, and I like all the wildflowers and the natural habitat that comes along with it, and it can do some very good things for our community. But we also need to make sure that it's right for our current city as well as for the people that live here, and I would welcome more input from those who live in my ward and all of New Ulm about what you would like.
Thank you, Michelle. Larry, do you support official steps to make New Ulm a pollinator-friendly community? If so, what initiatives would you support?
I support it. We already have it on North Broadway as a prime example within our community. That group has been very ambitious to take on that project and to maintain those areas. I've met with members of that group at exploring other areas within our community that could be potential future pollinator gardens, and brought forth it to an organization within the community. They're looking into it. They're doing some planning with that group. As a council member, right now, we don't really have a lot of money into the budget towards, dedicated towards it. But, you know, if they come through it with a plan, we can look at it and the steps and what might be a good fit within our community. And we may even have to bring it to our Planning Commission if they're bringing a new idea of how to put in a holding pond within a housing development, say, for example, and we might be able to attract other wildflowers and things of that nature.
Thank you. The next question, Larry, we'll start with you. How do you feel about recent suggestions to sell park property?
I take it pretty serious because you're saying to sell the park land is what you're...
Yes, the question is to, suggestions to sell park property.
I take it pretty serious because, you know, our forefathers dedicated that land. But I think we also have some land that we haven't developed in 150 years, and before we go out and build new parks, we have to look at why did we dedicate that land 150 years ago? And one example is on South Market on German Street, and it's got a lot of topography issues. We haven't done anything with it. You know, I would support developing it for housing potentially, but I haven't heard all sides of why to sell it and what we'd use of the park land. So I think it comes down to, we have to choose our future parks wisely, and we may not have to make them as big as our previous parks just to maintain a future budget and what we can sustain within our community.
Thank you. Michelle, how do you feel about recent suggestions to sell park property?
I would be open to listening to the suggestions, and it certainly depends on the property being discussed. Are we talking an entire area of park, or is it just a little piece of the park? I would look at the reason why we are talking about getting that sold, and what is available for parks throughout the area. Are there parks nearby folks can use, or would this be the only park, and we're taking away something that kids use every day? So usage, the amount of parks available, and what people want to use that land for would all be part of an informed decision to deciding if that property should be sold or not.
Thank you. Michelle, the next question, we'll start with you. New Ulm's comprehensive plan needs to be updated. What are your thoughts on what has been done to date to address the plan and what other steps need to be taken?
So far, we're right in the beginning stages of the comprehensive plan. I do like the amount of input that is being requested from city members. I attended the in-person meeting and had a, actually, it was a pretty fun time. So if you are available, please go to the next in-person meeting. And you get to really work with people and give your ideas, work off of other folks' ideas, and create better ones when you're together. I do like that some people are unable to come, and we have the option online of being able to submit ideas. That interactive map is a really great tool that can be used, where you can go and pinpoint exact places on that map where you think a change is needed and write about the changes. And just being able to give the input, there's a lot more to come. I know the folks are coming back in November and doing some more serious study, and I really encourage everyone to please make your voice known, whether it's online or going back to the community engagement meetings that will be in November.
Thank you, Michelle. Larry, New Ulm's comprehensive plan needs to be updated. What are your thoughts on what has been done to date to address the plan and what other steps need to be taken?
Well, what's been identified so far is that we have three areas that we're primary focusing on. You know, one is the downtown, one is the Upper Cottonwood Street, one is the airport industrial for future expansion. And, you know, what I've seen so far is we've had three meetings, basically. Right now, we've gathered input and put it on whiteboards. They're taking that data, and they're going to bring it together and see where we are consistent and if there's a pattern of what people would like to see in the future with our city. I'd like to see us reach out to our students within our community to see, you know, when they're in high school now, when they return after college, what would they like to see in 10 years within our community? I'd also like to see, you know, what kind of manufacturing, how that might change within the future for our future industrial park needs on those capacities. But all in all, we're a little early in it, but we're going to get there.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, Larry, we will start with you. What special skills and experience do you have with the advisory and study nature with the advisory and study nature of the Zoning and Planning Commission?
Well, I would say I'm an active listener, and being on the advisory, I'd say I'd make people feel valid, you know, as an advisory on the commission, to hear both sides of what we're discussing as far as whether it's for a zoning issue. That's my answer.
Thank you. Michelle, what special skills and experience do you have with the advisory and study nature of the Zoning and Planning Commission?
The Zoning and Planning Commission always presents with ideas that people have for what they want to do with their property in New Ulm or potential property. And there's always two sides. Oftentimes, both sides have really good value. And I bring to the table the ability, first, to see both sides, the positives and negatives of both, and then to work together towards a consensus. I tend to not be a dictator. I am more consensus-building to figure out the best solutions to a problem. Even when there are no really super-great solutions or super-wrong, there's consensus building where you come to a solution that's best for the most.
Thank you. And we'll start with you then, Michelle. This question is, do you think city councillors should be voting members of city boards and commissions?
Very good question. I have heard both sides to the coin. I tend to fall on having board or city council members as perhaps an advisor to the board, not as a voting member to those, sorry, commissions, not as a voting member to the commissions. I believe that some commissions may feel that they can't go against what a commissioner says, and I don't want that to happen. I'm getting my boards mixed up. They go against what a councillor, don't want to say against what a councillor says. And I want to have, make sure those commissions are a free place where people can truly give their input to the commission and make their voice as citizens heard. and make their voice as citizens heard. A councillor can certainly be there as an advisor, but I don't think their opinion should be given unless it is asked for specifically.
Thank you, Michelle. Larry, do you think city councillors should be voting members of city boards and commissions?
I guess I can go either way with it. You know, every commission I've been on, I've been a voting member. We've never put it in our charter to be a non-voting member for our commission. You know, I feel when I'm on a commission, I'm there as an advisory to bring the information from that commission meeting to the council meeting and to share the views that were discussed during, say, for the Planning Commission to hot topic to the council and share with the council what the Planning Commission discussed and some of the views of it. If we want to act on it and say we don't want the council member to be a voting party, I would be fine with that. But at the end of the day, you know, the commissions are the advisory. And then, a lot of the commissions, we still have a tough time trying to find enough people to fulfill those commissions. So, that's why I think we've been voting members as a commission.
Thank you, Larry. Next question, and we'll start with you, Larry. What are your takeaways from the Strong Towns Community Presentations?
Well, I actively did not get to attend those Strong Towns meetings. So, it's hard for me to take any take from that. But, you know, from the individuals that I've talked to within the community, they like what was discussed. They liked that it was open-minded and that they were trying to get community input. They liked that they did a walk-around tour of the community, of the downtown especially, to see what could be improved upon or what's working within our community.
Thank you. Michelle, what are your takeaways from the Strong Towns Community Presentations?
I liked a lot of the ideas that Mr. Maron brought to New Ulm and his thoughts about especially downtown. One of the things that really struck out to me was we have some businesses in downtown that use multiple storefronts, and it presents one huge facade. And his idea was to require that each storefront looks different, even if it's the same building or it's the same company. We create different facades to make those buildings look more friendly and inviting and open in downtown New Ulm. And I really like that. I like his idea of having at least a street diet, if not completely, as somebody said earlier in the last time, that we have actually no parking in downtown and have people walk. And I would love to see a bustling, thriving downtown of people enjoying music and having fun and meeting and greeting each other.
Thank you. The next question, and Michelle, we'll start with you. Do you have a plan for the city of New Ulm to address the availability of legal marijuana?
I do not have a plan to address legal marijuana.
This is loaded, isn't it? I work... All right. I work in the substance abuse field. Yes, I have opinions. Sorry.
That's all right. It is legal, and I think we need to do the best as a city to regulate it and make sure we know who is doing the selling and make sure we have rules in place for who can buy.
Thank you. Larry, do you have a plan for the city of New Ulm to address the availability of legal marijuana?
I do not have a current plan for legalizing marijuana. We've discussed it at a council meeting, you know, the topic about stores selling some sort of gummies and some sort of products. Now, I think we brought it back and said we would like to talk about it a little bit more. And I think we have as a community, we have the opportunity to limit how many licenses we want within our community. So, we might just say it's at one place or two places within our community. And I think that could be our first step. I think it's always going to be around there, you know, within our communities. But I don't think we need to go out and open it up for every store in town is selling the products.
Thank you, Larry. Next question. Rewrite? Do I read this the way it is? Okay. Yeah, do I?
Just read the question.
Okay, all right. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No, that's all right. Okay, and Larry, we'll start with you. How would you work with the council to consider competing information from constituent concerns, suggestions, and problems in order to assist council in making decisions that require careful deliberation and action?
Repeat that one time.
Yeah. I'm trying to think about breaking in it. Let's see. Okay, how would you work with the council to consider competing information from constituent concerns, suggestions, and problems in order to assist council in making decisions that require careful deliberation and action?
I guess, first of all, if a constituent has something that he or she wants brought forward, I would bring it to city staff and bring it to a commission. And I'll say if it was a safety issue, bring it to the Safety Commission and let them discuss that issue. And then, bring the recommendations from the Safety Commission and from that individual and discuss it, share it at a council meeting. And we may not get the full answer to that meeting, but we might table that question that he or she may have and how to proceed for the future, you know, to take action. But, you know, sometimes people don't want to be, you know, they want their question answered, but they don't want to be the one bringing it forward, you know, from the audience. And you do your best to try to do the research and try to find a solution.
Thank you, Larry. Michelle, how would you work with the council to consider competing information from constituent concerns, suggestions, and problems in order to assist council in making decisions that require careful deliberation and action?
That's a big question.
Yes, and it's been rewritten.
I think we know constituents in New Ulm are going to have differing opinions. And it is something that we will see often, might be within our own ward, and it might be something that bubbles up to the level of a council meeting. And I think it goes back to that first question about what do you do with people who don't think the same thing you or have different opinions than what you do. And it's a bunch of listening and trying to hear again what that person is saying with an open mind, rather than just going in with your own opinion. It could very well be something where the council goes and asks the city to give us more information. And it could be the attorney for the city that we ask the attorney for more information so we do what's right and legal. And it is something that may not be answered right when that person wants the answer from a council meeting. But we definitely need to make sure we have all the information and we hear all sides before we can make a decision.
Thank you. And that, according to the expert, there are no more questions. I'll go with her. All right, let's thank the candidates for their participation tonight. It's not easy, is it? I know. Thank yous. The League of Women Voters wishes to thank everyone who helped with this educational event, including our candidates, the volunteers...
They each get a closing.
What?
They each get a closing statement.
Oh. Thank you. I am sorry. Okay, you do each get a closing statement. So, let us go to Larry for your closing statement. And you have one minute.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters of New Ulm for hosting tonight's forum. I would also like to thank my campaign team and supporters for their ongoing encouragement. I'm proud to call New Ulm my home. It's been an honor to represent the citizens of Ward 4 these past eight years. A lot of projects were completed in that time, but there's still a lot of work to do. I'd like the opportunity to serve another term and keep working towards the city's best future. If re-elected, I will continue to be an approachable, reliable resource for Ward 4 and all New Ulm residents. I will actively listen, respond, and follow through, asking the right people the right questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Michelle?
Thank you again to League of Women Voters, KNUJ, and NewCAT for helping people make an informed decision this fall. As we go into the comprehensive plan and strategic planning over the next four years, the question becomes, who do you want to have sitting at the council table? As your councillor, I will bring fresh ideas to New Ulm. With over 30 years of experience here in New Ulm, these ideas will be informed by the past, but not bound by it. I've been active in this community from starting 100 Women Who Care to sitting on various boards, city commissions, and committees. I do those things because I care about New Ulm, and I want what's best for New Ulm. I believe that I am the best person to work for you these next four years, and I ask for your vote this November.
Thank you, Michelle. Shall we give them a second? The League of Women Voters wishes to thank everyone who helped with this event, educational event, including our candidates, the volunteers, NewCAT, KNUJ, and the Journal. A vote reminder. This forum was designed to educate you for your vote in the general election. Remember, the general election takes place on November 8, 2022. Absentee voting opens September 23 and is available until November 7. For complete information on elections, voting, including registration to go to vote, go to vote411.org or G. Please remember to vote. It matters. Thank you and good night.